I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda for February 5, 2020. Motion to approve by Lou.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's now 7:30. A reminder to the library is closing at 8 p.m. tonight.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Motion to approve agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have nothing under communications for tonight. Public comments?
We're all looking at you.
Lou, you want to give us any updates that you may be aware of or anything pending on the proposed land swap with Exchange Club?
Right now, no news so far on that land swap, but I will talk to the Exchange Club next week and see if we can get more, get closer to that land swap deal.
Everybody's mic on? Are we all set? Very good. Thank you. So the next item, in terms of any proposed changes or thoughts on the ethics ordinance, I know that there's been some discussion on it. I'm going to talk with our labor attorney, Joe McQuade. He had given us some information in the past on that, so I think I will ask his advice. And I know he did some work on it, and I'll get back to the group.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Appointments to boards and commissions. Jim?
I just have one for tonight. I would nominate Mike Agalati to serve on the Housing Court Board of Appeals.
I'll second it.
So Mike Agalati for the Housing Code Board of Appeals. And made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is something that I received from the Land Use Department, and it's a request for statute 8-24 review. Whenever we have purchase, get land, or sell land, we have to send it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and recommendation to us to proceed. Now, in this case, it's a little bit different because they are recommending that the Baines subdivision give right-of-way land to the town. So as this subdivision becomes developed, there will be a need, if you look on page two, there's a portion of Thompson Hill Road along the frontage of lot number three, as well as the entire frontage of lot number one on East Cotton Hill Road, where the existing road right-of-way width is less than 50 feet. Additional right-of-way must therefore be deeded to the town as specified in section 3.3 letter E of the subdivision regulations. So all I'm asking tonight to follow protocol is that you send this to the Planning and Zoning Commission and let them know that we will take action to accept this land. So it's a request for you to approve that the land acceptance of right-of-way in the Baines subdivision go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review.
It looks like this is two small parcels, right? One on Thompson, one on East Cotton Hill?
Correct.
Do you just want a motion to do that?
To send it, to refer the 824 to Planning and Zoning.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we refer the 824 regarding the transfer of two parcels, one along Thompson Hill Road and one along East Cotton Hill Road as part of this, the Lillian Ray Baines subdivision to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll make that second.
So go by Mike.
Discussion?
Sure.
Okay. Where exactly is it up in that? Is that?
The shaded area here.
By the bottom.
So now, since this is a subdivision, it looks like all three sides have a right-of-way on the road. So there's no need for this right-of-way to become a tom road.
Where is the right-of-way? What road is it?
It looks like there's two parcels. There's two parcels in the description. One here, this shaded area here, and this is really, so that the existing road looks like it will have sufficient right-of-way associated from the center line to the edge of the road.
And that's Thompson Hill.
Right? And this Thompson Hill, and then also right here on East Cotton.
For the subdivision regulation. Okay? And then down here. For the road to be deeded to the town. For the existing road to be considered an existing road, legal to say existing road, we need a right-of-way of people's property to make that road wider?
It sounds, yeah, the way this reads, it's not, we don't have a sufficient amount of town right-of-way from the center line of the road, and this is intended to correct that.
Yeah. What, in other words, it's widening the town's, not necessarily the road, but the road and its right-of-way.
Yeah.
So that it meets current road regulations. And we would do that when something is being developed as a condition for it.
That was a few feet?
Yep. It says.
Fifty feet.
Yeah.
Less than fifty.
Which is what we need to have. We need to have a base of fifty feet.
So it looks like additional right-of-way must therefore be deeded to the town.
Less.
It's a small area on the town. I think it's just a narrow. So they have to give the property.
Does it cause a hardship on these pieces of property? In other words, let's say these pieces of property were reduced by this much space, not a lot, but some. Does that create a hardship on this subdivision parcel?
To half that device?
It looks pretty big. I mean, is there a zoning regulation that says that this piece of parcel has to be so large? And if it's reduced by 50 feet?
I don't think that should be a problem.
The three parcels are still showing as.
It's for road, isn't it, Bob? It's for road reasons.
It's a right-of-way, it's the road.
Right. So any work that public works would need to do, they want to make sure that there's enough width. As you know, East Cotton Hill is not a very wide road. So as people add houses there, we want to make certain that should there be a need for any road work or a widening or anything of that nature, that there's sufficient right-of-way.
Doesn't serve, Bob, here. And I can, I understand that, and I even think that's, that's good at this point in time where this is going to become a subdivision that is active. That's a good time to do that. However, it looks from the map that if you were to reduce this piece of property by 50 feet.
It's not 50 feet. No. What it is, I believe, is.
It's 50 feet. It's very narrow.
Do you, does some, what?
It's just a little sliver.
I just want to hear what you're saying. I can't hear you.
It's, it's long, but it's a very narrow span.
Well, there's a portion along lot three, as well as the entire frontage of lot one on East Cotton Hill, where the existing road right-of-way is less than 50 feet. So I think they're not telling us how much feet, how many feet they're taking, but they're saying that it's not meeting the regulation.
And I understand that.
Do you want to, do you want to add anything, Bob?
I haven't seen it, so.
Okay.
I don't know if we're talking the length of the right-of-way or the width.
The width.
So the common thing from the road is 22 feet from the center, but all your roads are different. Some probably have six feet, some end up with a 10-foot right-of-way. Some are much larger depending on how that develops. See, it's not developed there, so I think we're trying to get back to the regulations where you have to allow a certain right-of-way. A lot of that has to do with their services there. Of course, if there's power, that right-of-way exists through every source, which is very large, snow, burns, and.
But I have more information.
But I think my question is really, I think the issue is Planning and Zoning knows that this piece of property has to be so many square feet based on the zoning of it, and I'm going to say let them take care of it, as long as there's not a hardship on the property.
Well, what Ashley wrote, because we had a question, because we have to make this acceptance, Lou. It says, whereas on August 15, 2019, the Town of Portland Planning and Zoning Commission approved a site plan of a three-lot subdivision, which included a condition in accordance with section 3.3 E of the subdivision regulations. So it's in keeping with subdivision regulations. We cryering that a 458-square-foot portion, parcel one, of the subject property, which is located along East Cotton Hill Road, and which is shown on map number 3170, which I think you have, as well as a 2,930-square-foot portion, parcel two, of the subject property, which is located along Thompson Hill Road, and which is shown on map number 3170 in the Town of Portland, be conveyed to the Town of Portland for right-of-way. So it's to be in keeping with the subdivision regulations.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
It's going to come back to you again.
Okay.
And hopefully we'll have more information. So it's going to go back to Planning and Zoning. It doesn't make sense to me, honestly, but because it's a rule that we have to, whenever any land is taken, send it back to Planning and Zoning. I mean, they are approving this based on the fact that the town will, will get this land, but it's a requirement that you be aware of it, that Planning and Zoning know that you sent it to them, and then I'm presuming they will say yes, and then it comes back to you for acceptance of that land. And if there's any further work that we need to do on it, I'll know about it by then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thanks for that. That's good discussion. The next, Bob Shay is here for the Connectivity Sidewalk Contractor. Bob, would you like to give us any highlights at the podium?
Do you think you have, I could?
Thank you.
If there's any questions on the.
I think you have good news for us.
So the Connectivity Grant, we're ready to move. So we've done a lot of work on that, and the bids came in very favorable. We did our due diligence and vetting the, you know, the proper low bidder, and we got some good results from that. So we're moving forward to, I think you have in front of you, to award the contract and to get moving on the rest of our sidewalk improvements, which will be, as you know, from Fairview to Spring Street and from Middlesex Avenue to Russell, both sides of 66. So it connects what some of the work we had planned on doing in the original bond. We were lucky enough to receive this grant to take some of that work out and put it into Main Street, which we did this summer, which we made it all the way to Arvid. So it's a win-win. So the sidewalks are being used each day, and now we hope to fix the ones that we still need to repair. So we're looking forward to kind of getting going as early as we can in the spring. This will engage our contractor to move forward, and we can have a construction meeting, and we can plan for improvements. There is perhaps the ability to add more because the award or the bids came in so low. Very competitive now. So we hope to be able to utilize all of the grant money, and we're working with the state to make sure that we can do that. So what we'll do is we'll watch the progress of the contractor, because he's a different one that we, that we've used in the past, and if things go well, we'll see if we can continue in the same direction up Main Street to repair more. So it's, it was good.
I think we did it at the right time, obviously.
We did. We tried, we tried to do that, take advantage of the winter months where, you know, they're trying to prepare their schedules and get their work. So as far as that is concerned, I think that was a great choice. We had other choices that we could have done, but I think this was a good choice.
Good job.
So, thank you.
Any questions for Bob? Always here. Jim, you want to read the resolution for us?
Sure. In the form of a motion, make a motion that we approve the attached resolution dated February 19, 2020, titled Contract Agreement with DMP Moray Construction, Inc., resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes First Selectwoman Susan S. Brandsfield to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland a contract with DMP Moray Contractors, Inc. of 117 Woodland Circle, Ludlow, Massachusetts, 01056, for the purpose of bid number 2020-05, Main Street Connectivity Sidewalk Improvements Project. Total contract amount prior to any required change orders is approximately $99,630, includes base bid, and be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes First Selectwoman Susan S. Brandsfield to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland any required change orders to the contract in order to utilize grant funds in accordance with, in accordance and in compliance with the terms of the grant or the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I heard it down here first. Rick, make your. Rick, discussion?
I just think it's great to get a bid like that, and it's going to be a nice chunk of sidewalk that really needs to get replaced. So appreciate the support of the state and the hard work to get this together.
I have a question, Bob. How did, how did their pricing come in versus the existing contractor we have? Was it comparable per foot, or was it significantly lower?
No. The engineering estimates of the grants were 204.
Really? Fantastic. Are you, are you confident they'll do a good job?
Based on the references that they gave and the vetting that we did, they've all had very good reviews. I think the flat work in the concrete business is changing.
Okay.
We will see. That's why we won't extend any of them until we see. We have a very good engineering firm that watches them as well. Yeah, we're looking forward to it. They've done some great work in the state. We've had some good reviews based on that, so I think that's really the way you have to go. That's why we did it.
Right.
Hopefully, it's just as good as nothing.
Great.
Because we've had really good work.
Yeah. When do you expect them to start?
I expect they'll be eager as soon as the proper paperwork and miscellaneous things are done. And that all depends on the season. I'm sure they'll get going as soon as they get concrete and the kids get around. There's some DOT and work that they'll have to do for the community as soon as.
Any other questions? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next series of items are annual matters that we bring to you. Michelle, my assistant, and I go through these, and we're working with a grant writer for the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, and they also assist us as well as state laws. And so the affirmative action policy statement is in front of you. It should be the most up-to-date in accordance with state and federal laws, and I would ask for you to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the affirmative action policy statement as provided.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Rob. Questions?
So is required by federal law that this be renewed every year, I mean, miscellaneous values?
In particular, because we accept state and federal grants.
So that's one of the things that was on. Is this any different from last year's?
I think the only differences might, might be in a little bit of the wording in terms of some of the protected classes on the back. We did have the group that's helping us review it and make sure that it was up to date. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next is the Fair Housing Policy. This is another statement that we need to review and approve, and it also is in accordance with that state federal rules and regulations. There's also training that I've been to and others in our town college may be going to. So this is very important, and is the Fair Housing Policy Statement. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve the Fair Housing Policy Statement as provided to be read adopted on the 19th day of February, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next is Title VI of the Civil Rights of 1964, our policy statement. And again, these are statements that have been passed. We try to do them every year. I have also been to training on this, as has Michelle, and notice has been posted for the public as well. And I know we receive federal grants, and this is something that's important for us to reiterate on the statement side. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure. I'll also make a motion to approve the policy statement for Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 as provided.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lou. Questions? Concerns? Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. Jim, refund?
Sure. I make a motion that we refund the amount of $54.64 to Kevin M. Hopkins.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $338.54 to Hyundai Lease Titling Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $53.76 to Judith A. Johnson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And I make a motion that we refund the amount of $4,016.29 to Bruce Rodney Backman and Janice Marie Olson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $176.66 to ACAR Leasing LTD.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $218.08 to JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., North America.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Status and committee reports? I'll start at this end. Any committee reports?
Nope.
Okay. Down the set. Rick, any updates?
Anything to report? Let's see. Lou and I are going to talk to, was it Lou?
Portland Boat Works?
Was it?
Yankee.
Or Yankee. Yankee Boat Works.
The owners of Yankee.
The owners of Yankee Boat Works about the potential of using, going through their property to gain access to the town riverfront property down there as a potential public river access point.
That'd be Riverside, Riverside Marina.
Well.
Which way are we talking? Which one are we talking? All right. Let me clarify it for you.
Okay.
We're talking to the Yankee owners who own the larger proportion of land of Riverside, and Riverside is adjacent to the town property. So what we're trying to do is talk to the owners to get access to the Portland property.
Yeah.
Which has to go through Riverside.
Which has to go through Riverside, but Lou learned and filled me in that the Yankee people, Morbos, actually own the land where Riverside is.
And I haven't heard back from the owner yet. I know they were on vacation. So Rick and I will hopefully meet with them. I'm going away next week, so sometime in March.
Very good. Thank you.
Excellent.
Rob?
Okay. With regards, with regards to the park, we've had some very good meetings, and as a result of those meetings with the developer and the engineer and the town, we did an evaluation of the contingency funds that are available, looked at the preliminary information that the developer gave us in terms of what it would cost to install a, to prepare the grounds for the fitness equipment and to install it. And given those numbers, everyone was on board with feeling that this was a good direction to go in. So the town has given the developer the go-ahead to start preparing to get the equipment purchased, and the engineer will be drawing up Change Order 5, which should be hopefully the last change order, and that'll have the preparation and the equipment purchase for, to complete the fitness circuit. So they are, in talking with them, it sounded like we're talking about a timeframe of the equipment coming in late April, first week of May. So that's really the last main component that has to be done. Certainly, there's a lot of work being done on the concession building, but it's pretty far along, actually. We went looking at it last week, and it's, it's pretty far along. There's some work on the ceilings to be done. I think one fixture, one sink had to be installed. And there's some, just minor exterior work has been done as well in terms of lighting and decorative components that are going to be outside. So in talking with the contractor that's working on the building, he, we were talking probably about a three-week timeframe in terms of completing the work on the building. So that would complete the building. Obviously, the fitness circuit would be the other component, the other piece being the street. With regards to that, I know that, well, we know that Comcast has been out there. Not sure if Comcast completed all their work, but they certainly did some of it. That leaves pretty much Frontiers, Frontier needs Comcast to finish their work. So if they're done, they can move on to do their piece. When we talked about it last week, we were talking about within the month potentially to have all that work done.
Right.
Obviously, I'm sure it depends on weather, but that's what we were talking about. And we had discussions about working with the engineer and the town and the developer to really go through and determine the percent completion or total completion of all the components at the park so that we could start looking at the final steps of the contract with the developer. So it's very good news. And I will be, Jim and I went out, we got some new drone shots, so I'm planning to put together some sort of write-up to put on Facebook as well as give to Nate so it could be put out on the Park and Rec site. So it'll be an update to everyone, but pretty much what I just said, but just so people could see it and see the pictures, because they're, they're pretty neat, so.
Impressive. It's coming to go.
So we're nearing the end of the adventure.
Very good. Any questions? Great. Any other reports? Jim?
Really just the Water and Sewer Subcommittee. We had another meeting actually two hours ago. Sorry, Rick. We ran a little long, so I think that's what. But we're working on, we were working on, looking at sewer rates today versus cost, looking at 2020, 2021 budget requirements versus revenue projections and things of that nature. So we're getting, we're starting to refine where we're at with those items. We have another meeting scheduled for next Monday to keep the progress moving in there.
Good. Anything else? Anything else? Good. Reports. Thank you. Public comment? Any informal discussion? I had mentioned, actually, Joe McQuade had just walked in. I had mentioned that we, I will speak with you, Joe, about ethics ordinance. Because it's been on our agenda several times. And I know that in the past, you've helped us review that, the original. And I know you have recommendations for some changes, as does the commission itself. So, we will be talking. Does that sound good to the smart thing?
Yes.
With that, I would ask that there be a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy on collective bargaining. And I'm inviting Labor Attorney Joe McQuade to join us.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we will say good night to everyone. And we'll be set for a couple minutes. And then we'll go into executive session. Good night.